Live from the city building in Athens, Ohio, your local source for live city meetings. TGC 15 presents Athens City Council.
Good evening. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. It was about 7:30 on Monday, February 21st, 2011. My name is Jim Sands. I'm acting as President Pro Tem. President bias is not here this evening. Our first order of business is to establish your quorum. There's our seven members of council present. In this instance, I act as a member of council. I will introduce ordinances, but I can also vote on them and will. Our first, our next point of business is disposition of minutes. Minutes from the special session held January 31st, 2011, and the regular session held February 7th, 2011. We have a motion to accept those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor of acceptance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Minutes are accepted. Communications from other council members. Member Platt.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. At this moment, I would like to recommend a replacement for the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. Member Leslie Schaller, who's been on the commission for a number of years, is stepping down, and a replacement is needed. And Elizabeth Braun has expressed interest. So I'd like to recommend her at this moment. If there's any questions, we can address those, too.
Any questions for Member Platt regarding the substitution of membership on the Municipal Arts Commission? All those in favor of accepting the appointment of Elizabeth Braun to the Municipal Arts Commission, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Thank you.
She is accepted, thank you. I would like to make a motion that we accept the auditors' reports for January. We do this on a monthly basis.
Second.
All those in favor of this acceptance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We also have a request for a liquor permit. This is a request for a new permit. It's a D-5H at the Dairy Barn, Southeastern Ohio Cultural Arts Center. And this D-5H designation of a permit is to allow sale of beer, wine, and spirits on premises only, only until 1:00 a.m. This would be for events that are occurring at the Dairy Barn. Prior to this, they've had to get a temporary permit for each event, so they're asking for this. If anybody has concerns or questions about this, please give it to our per before March 14th. All comments must be postmarked by March 14th. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Any a while?
Couple things. Let's see if I can find them all in place here. First is, we rather have, let's see, I lost it already here. Did not. Oh, there it is. Okay, great. A couple things. One is that there's a retirement reception tomorrow between 3:00 and 6:00 at the Community Center for Chief Vic Mayor. He's retiring tomorrow, the 22nd. And I say that will be at the Community Center.
Do you have to RSVP?
Actually, you do, but I'm sure you can crash it if you...
Have I the right cape?
Yes. Basic presentations are full cap, but I said between 3:00 and 6:00. And the consequence of course is at the 23rd, the next day at 11:00 a.m. In this chamber right here, we'll have the oath ceremony for the new chief, Captain Pyle. And that will be at 11 o'clock on the 23rd. The next thing I have is, I'm sure you're aware or maybe not aware, that we signed a contract with perfection. This is up our energy efficiency contract to do this building, community center, parking garage, oh, code office. So those are some things that, those should be starting pretty soon. I think March, April 1st, I think it was. I forget exactly. The other one, of course, is that there will be a Disabilities Awareness Festival. That's Tuesday, March 1st, at the Athens Community Center as well, 6:30 at 8:30. I just mentioned that so people can attend. And last, I was contacted by our state representative, Debbie Phillips, who's having a town hall meeting concerning Senate Bill 5. This will be this Saturday coming up at the Community Center between 10:00 a.m. and 12:00. I guess there's a need for discussion on that. I was contacted early today on that meeting. And that's all I really have.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Auditor, check.
No report.
Lord Director Packard, no?
No, no report, Mr. President.
So we'll move on to ordinance, one ordinance for third reading. Ordinance 0811. An ordinance authorizing design of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation, Project 261, introduced by Councilmember Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 0811.
Second.
Okay. This ordinance is for, authorizes a service city's safety director to advertise and accept bids and enter into an agreement for the design of the Carriage Hill Bridge Rehabilitation project. And the work for it to complete this project will take place later this year. And we will receive monies through the Ohio Department of Transportation Credit Bridge Program to help with the expenses of the bridge. And then this bridge will, the expenses on this particular project will also help us with another major bridge rehabilitation, which is the Oxbow Bridge, which is taking place later this year. This particular ordinance, though, authorizes us for design for the Carriage Hill Bridge repairs.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance, passing ordinance 0811, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 0811 is passed. Ordinance is for second reading. Ordinance 0911. An ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance. And ordinance 0, ordinance 10810, authorizing design engineering of the Oxbow Bridge, Project 247. That was the project that Member Nysel was just talking about. Second reading again. Ordinance 1011. An ordinance authorizing the filing of a proposal with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval with a period from January 1st, 2012, through December 31st, 2012. Ordinance 1111. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into an agreement for fiscal year 2011-12, Ohio Attorney General's Drug Use Prevention Grant. Ordinance 1211. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development for a community development block grant for calendar year 2012, which is federal fiscal year 2011. Ordinance 1311. An ordinance providing for the issuance of $300,000 worth of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and installing energy conservation improvements at the city's community center and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Member Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider 1311 under suspension of the rules. We are under a time constraint on this. The dates are, elude me at this point, maybe go...
Well, we just got to sign contract today, and they want to start in a few weeks. This ordinance gives me the authority of the city to borrow this money. Then we have to post that as revenue with the Budget Commission, and then there will be an appropriation coming in a couple of weeks, so...
So time is critical. That's the reason.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 1311, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is passed and in effect. For second reading again, ordinance 1411. I'm sorry.
I've got to move to...
Oh, we just suspended.
Suspend the rules. Okay. I would like to move to suspend the rules on 13, I mean... I would like to move to adopt 1311. I will turn this over to Alon, because he really has a clear understanding of the nuances of the actual project. But first, I'd like to say, once we start bringing in bond counsel, we usually operate on a constraint with respect to time. So we are borrowing $300,000 of notes because we're from the community center fund to repair. And then I'd like to ask Alon if he'd say a few words, would you? Please?
Sure. So this is part of, the mayor mentioned earlier, perfection groups work in the city to find energy conservation efforts that we can undertake in this project. This is part of a larger project that was around $417,000, as the mayor mentioned earlier in the meeting, for projects at the community center, the parking garage, city curb building, as well as a little bit of work here at City Hall. This is a cost-saving measure that the city is taking, as well as environmental responsibility to reduce our use of energy in the city. Over the 15-year period of this project, it is anticipated to save the city over $400,000 in operational and energy savings. And that's also a good reason to get this moving.
Chris, quickly, some time.
I'd like to point out that the perfection, this is more than a year in making. I think they anticipated us to be done much earlier this. Again, the total package, when they were looking at the possible energy savings throughout the city was almost 4 million, almost 10 times as much. But we decided to go in easy. This is phase one. If it works out, we'll try phase two. It won't be the 4 million, but some other number. As soon as we, as you remember, there's a longer list of things we can do in any savings with a certain amount of payback date. The payback date here is about eight years, with a 15-year total amount, almost doubling the amount of money above what we'll be spending. Some of the other ones are a little bit longer term, but they have to do with, of course, other infrastructure, depending on the paybacks. Energy's going to go up, so we have to assume that the costs are going to go up on this if we don't do something like this. And the part of the mix, of course, in this particular ordinance does not cover the parking garage, since it has enough fund to expand on its entity savings. So this is really, for most part, the community center and peripherals.
For the questions, comments? All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1311, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordinance 1311 is passed. We move on to ordinance 1411. An ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance, also introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 1411.
Second.
1411 is, the primary reason for doing this under suspension is that we have money that we have received from a grant that we need to put upfront money for, for FEMA fire grant, 90% of which will be reimbursed. And so that is important. We also are appropriating in the same ordinance money to the CDBG revolving loan fund in anticipation to the sometimes called Hickory Creek Center. Is that where it is coming from?
United Healthcare Center.
Yes. I'm going to have to write that on my wrist so that the next time I remember its name.
You always think of Hickory Creek.
Yes, that's our fundamental problem. So that's the reason for the suspension. Timing in the first one. And I'm sorry, I jumped into the second parts.
This is voting on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 1411, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the rules are suspended.
Mr. President, move adoption of 1411.
Second.
Thank you. 1411 is going to, will appropriate funds for, to front a grant from the Fire Department for FEMA, a FEMA fire grant, most of which will be reimbursed. And the second part would be to appropriate money to the CDBG revolving loan fund. As the money is paid back on the loan, it goes into our fund for potential use in future efforts, economic development efforts.
Okay. Mayor?
This, as Nancy mentioned, is a revolving loan fund. It comes from the state. It's going to assist in the nursing healthcare center. They will pay us back, it'll go into our coffers, and then we'll be able to put it out for other businesses. This has, this $500,000, as well as $200,000 from our present revolving loan fund, has been put forth for the center. Again, this is about 115 jobs, I believe, that will be put in place. This is mostly for equipment, personal equipment. When I say that, I mean the actual inner stuff, rather than outer stuff. Just as a way of background.
Thank you, Mayor. Auditor, you started to raise your hand. You okay?
Well, no, I'm fine, because we're suspending. But we also owe administrative fees in the revolving loan fund, because we have an administrator. And some of those are due this, this week. That's the extra 1,500 on there for that $500,000. They're due this month, so...
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1411, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ordinance 1411 is passed. Then we have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1511. An ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance, again, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
This is what happens when you go out in meetings.
1511 is an appropriation ordinance that I don't think I have to suspend on. And it has, does two things. It's going to take some money that is part of our community development block grant fund and put it toward grant administration and fair housing. And then the second part will take $1,500,000 to the ODOT grant fund for the Richland Avenue 682 and increase our appropriations by that amount. And I guess we'll be reading it again.
Did the auditor, the mayor, have any comments?
No, we just, we get pieces.
Thank you.
Generator, suspend. Is the generator a good suspend?
Yes. Ordinance 1611. An ordinance amending ordinance 0, excuse me. An ordinance amending ordinance 12610, increasing the authorized expenditure for a generator to provide backup power to the water plant and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Okay, and I'd like to note that we have probably a typo in the ordinance number. That's been corrected. At this time, I'd like to move to suspend the rules on 1611.
Second.
The reason for suspension is that we had purchased, as you can see, in 1910, a generator, and we need to, in order to use it in the appropriate way, we need to, right now, buy a larger generator. And that's what's going on in this ordinance. We're adding, it's a time, we can't have that generator sitting around. I mean, it's like, let me...
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 1611, all those in favor of suspension only.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended. Member Bain?
I move adoption of 1611.
Second.
1611 is going to purchase, by adding $15,000 from the water fund, a generator to supply backup power to the water plant, something that we will, we'll hope we never will need, but if we do have an ice storm or flood or some other event, we'll be prepared for it.
And the original amount was?
40,000.
So no?
No. Gone up to 55,000.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1611, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 1611 is passed and in effect. Ordinance 1711. An ordinance amending the 2011 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an interfund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to move to consider 1711 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The main reason why we must suspend, at least some of you out there know about this, is that we have a tax bill due date that is coming up quickly. And we need to appropriate the money so the auditor can pay our taxes for us, our property taxes.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 1711, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
1711, I move adoption of.
Second.
1711 is going to increase the amount of money in various funds of the CDBG fund to pay our property taxes on houses that we own and are managed through a Metropolitan Housing Authority, from the City Enhancement Fund to pay property taxes for Athens Station project. And the last thing we're going to be doing is taking money, 4,000, putting it in the general fund. And basically, that, it happens in three sections in this ordinance.
Any comments?
Most of this, as Councilmember Bain mentioned, is real estate tax. We put various fund lines, some were actually a little bit off, but it's such a small amount, it wasn't required to do the ordinance. But the fact is that there, it was a guesstimate in many cases in some of the fund lines and some omissions, mostly on the part of myself, probably in terms of all the different state taxes. Again, it's always a guesstimate what you're going to get. We could look at last year's and then put it in there. So that's what it'll cover. Except for Section 3, of course, which is for services. And that has to do with the changing of our online code. Since we pass ordinances all the time, it's always good to bring them up to the current status on our website. And that's the charge for that.
We owe the money. Okay, all those in favor of accepting ordinance 1711, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 1711 has been adopted and is suspended the rule. We're still on ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 1811. An ordinance amending ordinance 8506, creating an unclaimed monies fund and establishing guidelines. This is introduced by me, I guess, it's a personal committee. This is simply establishing a unclaimed funds account by the auditor's office.
We have an unclaimed funds fund. And what we're adding here is that we, when checks are stale dated after 90 days, that money is automatically, from this previous ordinance, transferred into that fund. At some point, we send out letters at the end of the year trying to locate the owners one last time. This is all by law. They have 60 days to reply. What we've added in the middle is that the money is automatically appropriated by my office, instead of me coming back to council saying, we need, you know, $1,800 appropriated. Then we will just automatically do whatever the amount of the unclaimed funds are. There's no extra money anywhere. It's all the unclaimed funds. Then what happens is, some money probably will be claimed. The remainder, then, is transferred back into the general fund, which the previous ordinance already had. That is also by law, and the ORC had in there. So we're just asking that we can go ahead and, you know, post that money in the expense account, so instead of coming back to council.
So this is just streamlining operation that's already...
Just so the auditor's office can just handle that money.
Any other comments or questions about this one? This is just first reading. Thank you. Ordinance 1911. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a fiscal year 2011 Community Housing Improvement Program CHIP grant application to the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships, Ohio Department of Development, and designating Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Agency as the Community Housing Improvement Program Grant Contract Administrator and declaring an emergency. This, again, is funds from the Ohio Department of Development, along with funds from the city. And this is an action that will allow the city to work to improve some housing within our city. Mayor, did you have some?
This is, we did not do this last cycle. It's a two-year cycle, or 18 months, I think it is. Last, the previous, this is CHIP money, the basic community housing improvement program. It's for low and moderate income housing, targeting, it has various different activities. We did not do it last year, because we pretty much expended all the different, the activities we've done in the past. In the past, we've done housing rehabilitation, housing repair, and some down payment assistance. Again, this is for homeownership, considering we're at 70% rental market plus, and it's targeted at low and moderate income above a certain threshold, or below a certain threshold. It's limited to how much, how often we could do this without going over the same ground. This year, in conjunction with, half cap, the discussion was is trying to put together a Habitat for Humanity house in the city, donating some land from our side of the city, our side. Again, we'll probably still revisit the housing repair and rehabilitation. We'll also try for, there's another program out there, too, for rental rehabilitation, which I think the two administrations got. I think the Hendrick administration tried for it without success. Mostly because, what it does, of course, is that's a 50% match for landlords to actually put them, to rehabilitate their properties. But it requires, of course, that they have to follow HUD rental guidelines, and therefore, it's not lucrative in many cases, or attractive to many landlords. We are probably going to work in conjunction with the Athens Metropolitan Housing. They have some rentals, of course, within the city. And using them as the participants, as landlords, we can probably help them stretch their dollars a bit more. That is the intention at this point. We'll probably have to have at least one public hearing. I think there's been a change in the, it used to be you require two. I think we just require one now, but I'm not sure about that. I've been looking at the guidelines, and they've shifted a bit. If you remember, we used to have to have a Community Housing Improvement Strategy, or CHIS, in place. And that's kind of far by the wayside, but it does require some oversight from the Athens Hawking Housing Coalition, the Athens, well, the Athens Housing Coalition, to review this as well. So there's oversight on various levels. And we will have a public hearing coming up. I think I probably said more than you need to know, but I don't know.
Questions? Other comments or questions? Moving on. Two ordinance 2011. An ordinance closing a portion of East Union Street between Court and College from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, April 22nd, 2011, for a street fair in celebration of Earth Day, introduced by Councilmember Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This does, as explained, close a portion of our city's streets on Earth Day, April 22nd. And it will close East Union Street between Court and College. And it'll close it to vehicular traffic from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. And then it will ban parking on East Union Street between Court and College from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on that day.
Even though the times mentioned are otherwise is 3:00 to 9:00, our police and safety personnel always needs some extra time at the beginning and the end of these programs to ban, to deal with parking Comments, questions? Ordinance 2111. An ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, May 21st, 2011, May 21, 2011, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair, also introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is on May 21, this spring, for an annual event, the International Street Fair, that a lot of community residents, a lot of students, a lot of out-of-town visitors attend. And what we'll be doing is closing Court Street from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on that day. And we will close, it'll be closed to vehicular traffic from 7:00 to 6:00 p.m. It will also ban parking from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And we do have with us here tonight Amanda Yusko, who is Chair of the International Week Committee, and she's also on the staff of the Office of International Students and Faculty Services. If we have any additional questions?
Amanda like to say anything?
We just appreciate the continued support of this.
This is first reading. There will be three readings, so questions, concerns, comments, come up later. Ordinance 2211, an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency, thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for repair of the city building fire escape, introduced by Councilmember Bain.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to consider suspension, 2211 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the extension, suspension is that we have a serious problem with the fire escape right outside this door, and we have worked to get a reasonable repair process in place. And that's why we're, the service director is asking for no formal bidding, given the circumstances. We need to have that fire escape fastened to the wall now. And we have a local person who's going to come in and do the welding, paint and remove scrap metal, replace existing handrails, replace existing decking on landings with bar grating, replace existing stair treads with bar grating, replace angle iron support for decking and stair, stair tread. So we will have that situation taken care of. And I think I did that under suspension, and I shouldn't have. But the time is of the significance, and Mr. President, please.
I'm anxious to get it.
I'm anxious to get it done. I'm going to be out there with my welding iron shortly.
Okay. This is voting on suspension only.
Thank you.
All those members in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2211, signify by saying aye. Opposed? The rules have been suspended. Mr. Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 022, oh, 2211. The need, we need to?
Second.
We have a second. I already talked about what was in the contract. We need to get it done as quickly as possible, and that's what we're doing here.
Okay. Fire chief has told us several times that this needs to be taken care of immediately, if not sooner, so.
Just take it.
Here we are.
Here we are, doing it immediately.
Yes. All those in favor of ordinance, passage of ordinance 2211, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ordinance 2211 is accepted, authorized, and in prospect. We have two one-reading resolutions. R0611, a resolution supporting the efforts of the city engineer to expedite improvements for Circle Drive, introduced by all council members. Who will speak for all the council members? Amanda Bain?
Mr. President, move adoption of 611, resolution 611.
Second.
Okay, 611, resolution 611. It's activities are summarized in the second whereas. The first one is very important, but the real need of it is in the second. The city of Athens secured an ARC grant to improve a portion of Circle Drive, a right-of-way that parallels Columbus Road in the vicinity of the new developments down there. And in order to do this, the city engineer, who was acting in our behalf, had to meet with the property owners and try to figure out what to do with respect to the width of our right-of-way and the needs of the road. And so council members do have a map on there, on the back of the sheet, which shows that there were several parcels that were in the area needed for the road. And so, at least I didn't, but the service director sent her city engineer over to talk to the people, to see if they would agree to give us the land. We all know that times are tough, and we don't know if the ARC grant would be available next year, so it seems very important to us to have this done. And that's why I'm spending a bit more time talking about it than I might have. So we have the city engineer secured, through an agreement, 6.37 acres from Athens Health Realty LLC, which we sometimes call Hickory Creek. And then .3100ths of an, .3 acres, .03 acres from Parfit Properties LLC, and .019 acres, really small pieces, from Michael Ginder, as shown on documentation. In exchange for no assessment being levied on these properties, for three improvements on the new section of Circle Drive. And it says here also that the actual final acreage may be adjusted slightly based on ODOT right-of-way plan review requirements. And so what we're doing with this is we're saying, we support what you did, Andy, and actually, we also want to say thank you to the people who have agreed to do this, and we've asked, we're asking the clerk of counsel to deliver a copy to the owners, to understand that we do appreciate their civic activities in donating these relatively small parcels in two cases, and pretty good-sized junk in the third case, pieces of land, to help us to move forward on this this year and have the Circle Drive construction completed. And so this is what is going on in 611.
Are there comments from council members regarding this ordinance, this resolution? I'm sorry.
I should probably add one more thing, and that is that, and I know Alahu brought it up last time, and I hope we pulled some numbers together so he is somewhat satisfied. Our basic principle has been that if we are developing a road that has a limited number of users, that they pay for it. The holes or example comes to mind. This is another example of that. There's a slight difference in contingency between those two, but with the amount that was donated by the UHCRC at $400,000, we're very close to the amount needed to complete this project. And so as time goes on, if the contingency isn't expanded, we generally put 10% on, then we'll be okay. If it is, then we'll find a way to get that small amount that's left, so.
Comments, questions? Mayor?
Again, part of the, the reason for doing this, again, is that we have a $400,000 ARC grant that's been waiting to be initiated. The process of going through an assessment process, a assessment of the property that we want to acquire, assessment of the property owners in the general area to offset in cost, would take probably a good long time, and we might lose the grant. It also would impact all the property owners. So, again, it'd probably even cost more than everything we're talking about in terms of the property itself when it's done, because we'd have to go through certified appraisals, assessment process, assessment board. And so we're trying to speed up the process, the whole situation a bit faster now.
We're hoping AMC survives as well, aren't we?
Yes, we are. I'm hoping it will.
All those in favor of resolution 0611, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 0611 is approved. Then we have resolution 0711, a resolution urging the Ohio General Assembly to renew the Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credit, again introduced by all council members. Speaking for all council members will be Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution was discussed at our committee meetings last week, and brings to our attention the fact that Ohio has an historic preservation tax credit. And these dollars bring new construction projects to communities. One of the ones we mentioned in particular was Marietta's Armory. And the, there are 31 other states in the nation that have programs offering the historic tax credits. So this resolution is offered to, and the information, once this is passed, will be forwarded to the General Assembly to let them know that we are in favor of the renewal of the historic preservation tax credit. And so I would move for its acceptance. Second.
Mayor, what?
Again, this is for preservation of various buildings, sites, and structures within the state of Ohio. I did a little homework on this. I think this was actually initiated during the TAP administration as governor. Again, in terms of us, we look at tourism, mostly the time we're looking at tourism in terms of the ecology rather than historical value of the landscape. But it's important to preserve some of our heritage as we go on into the next century. And this is one way to offset that. It'd be a shame if it gets lost in the shop there.
These tax credits utilized some properties on Union Street and Court Street?
No, not really. That was a different design. That was a, that was a. Reinvestment, yeah, area. That was a little bit of different animal.
Local, first estate.
Any other questions or concerns about resolution 0711? All those in favor of this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 0711 is accepted. Announcements and other business. The mayor mentioned a public hearing for the CHIP program.
I forget the date of it.
It's actually next Monday, which is February 28, 7:00 in this chamber. And immediately following that, will be a special session dealing with a resolution for designation of public repositories for active funds. The treasurer will be here, she's already contacted banks, et cetera, and we'll have our ordinance, actually a resolution, I'm sorry, a three-reading resolution, which will be up, but it needs to be accepted by March 1, so we'll be asking for suspension. So. We don't know an exact time for this special session because we don't know how long the public hearing is going to run. But council members will be here. Members of the audience who have questions or concerns about the CHIP grant, public hearing, or the special session about public monies, just probably need to be here by 7:00 on Monday, February 28. Other announcements and business. Committees that need to meet? Mayor?
Finance, personnel, when you get a chance.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Finance and personnel will have a meeting?
Almost certainly.
Anybody else? Okay. It's well-known that you can always add if you need to. Okay, so, right now, finance and personnel is on the agenda also. We'll move on to opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items in city services not covered on the agenda. Something we haven't talked about, but you feel the need to talk about. Yes, sir? You know what you need to do.
Nate Hall, 143 Grover. First, I wanted to bring to council's attention that on Wednesday, OU Student Senate passed a resolution urging the Athens County Fair Board and the operator of Numberfest to find a location other than the Athens County Fairgrounds to hold that event. Number one, because we think that holding the event at the fairgrounds poses more safety risks than safety benefits, as opposed to holding it outside of the city. And number two, because that's the traditional date of the Relay for Life, which is a great fundraiser to help with cancer research. And we'd like to encourage council to do the same with a one-reading resolution, if it hasn't already. Thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Talk about that and get it on our agenda, sure. Anybody else have comments about legislative items that were not covered? So that just leaves adjournment, and we are adjourned at 8:16. Be careful going home, it could be, it's still raining, I'm sure, but it should be icy.